All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular monthly meeting for March of the Little Miami Local Schools Board of Education. Mr. Gonda, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Grace?
Here.
Mr. Seibert?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Nemish?
Here.
Ms. Horvath?
Here.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adopt agenda, please.
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
I'll second.
Mrs. Horvath? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also need a motion for the reading of the minutes from the February regular meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Seibert?
I'll second.
Mr. Hamlin? Roll call, please.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The next thing on the agenda tonight is communications and or visitors to the board. Mr. Power?
Anything at this time, but we'll have some further dialogue as we get further into the agenda.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda would be item C, community comments on agenda items. Emily?
No one, no one has submitted any.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item D treasures reports and financial reports. Mr. Gonda?
Yes, under item D, number one, I asked for the board's approval of the monthly financial statements for the month ending February 2021.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll manage to move.
This is Grace and then Mr. Seibert on a second. Any discussion or Terry, anything you want to share?
Yes, it's our monthly financial reports, which includes our bank reconciliation, which of course still includes all of our construction funds we have not spent as of today. Also includes all of our other bank balances and then also included our individual fund reports. Two different general fund budgetary reports and also a revenue report for the general fund.
Any questions or discussion? All right, Mr. Gonda, roll call, please.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, under item D, number two, I asked for the board's approval of the contracts as listed.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Horvath?
I'll second.
Mr. Hamlin? Any discussion?
Yeah, actually, the the contracts you see listed are actually all there for monitoring of both of the elevators and for the fire alarm systems. They're all with SOCO and they're for the intermediate, the junior high and the high school.
Terry, is this the same company we typically contract with?
We've had actually a couple of different companies in there. We've had Siemens and SOCO. And I believe one more, but let's remind at the moment. And what we did is we we looked out on David Flory, I looked out and contacted all of them to see where we could get the best deal with all of them and try to get all of our buildings on with the the same company at the best price. And so now they're all with SOCO.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So Terry, does this help us meet building code requirements or is it required?
Yes, you have to have the nine one one response system and so on for the elevator and the fire alarms and all that. So yes, they are required.
And who is the current company?
Well, we have some Siemens and some with SOCO at the moment.
It's a mixture.
Yes.
The last time I was in the elevator at the high school, I noticed the certificate was actually expired. So we might make a note of that for SOCO going forward.
Absolutely.
I think that's actually, I think as part of the bid process, they they went around and did an inspection on that. I think one of the elements that we've discovered was that those elevators have hardwired nine one one lines and we can go to a digital element and and get rid of the annual fee for the monthly nine one one line.
Yeah, they'll be they'll be cellular connected.
Right.
And eventually with the 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 plan is to then have all those under under one contract with with SOCO, right? That's
Correct.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you, Terry, for the information. Any any other questions?
So just to clarify, Terry, maybe it's two different things. Is this monitoring for the elevators only for emergency response? Or is it inspection of the elevator itself?
I believe that the the state does the inspection and then this is for the monitoring of it for the like the the phone system and so on that's in there for emergencies.
And then there's another vendor, I think it's Thrison Cup that actually does maintenance on elevators when we identify an issue. There's also fire monitoring for the building as well.
So the state does the inspection and why did they let it lapse?
I imagine it's it's probably correct. I probably don't have the right current one up is my guess. I'll have to look into that with the
Well, you'll you'll notice that in some in some locations, they just actually have a a posting that says the current certificate is on file at a office in the building or something.
Hmm.
Okay.
All right. If that's it, then we'll do a roll call, please.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, under item D, number three, I asked for the board's approval of the accepting of amounts and rates as determined by the Warren County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them.
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
Second.
Second by Mr. Seibert? Terry, you want to give a little bit a little bit of background here?
Yeah, each year we put together, which we had our tax budget hearing in January. It goes forward looking at our next fiscal year. These are amounts and rates for fiscal year twenty two, which starts July one of two thousand twenty one. So these our tax budgets are reviewed by the Warren County Budget Commission. And then we look at necessary rates to one pay debt and then two for operating funds. And actually this year we're dropping, we've been dropping the last several years now in our millage rates. Believe it or not, we have been going down. This year we're dropping one point four mills and that's a combination of the operating and also of our bond millage, our debt service from our bonds. We've been dropping a mill actually the last the last few years for sure. Eighteen to nineteen in nineteen to twenty, we dropped one mill each one of those years also. Like I said, we're dropping one point four this year. So that's three point four mills right there over the last three years, which is fantastic. And even with passing our our new bond levy and so on, we our millage has still been going down. Back in sixteen, I've refunded, which is a fancy word, I guess, for refinance, the some of the debt that we had from before and we were able to save six million dollars of taxpayer money at that point. So we don't have to make in those debt service payments or the life of the bonds. Ever since then, we've been dropping some mills and each year hopefully we'll be able to continue to to drop a little bit each year. At least that's the goal.
Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, that's good job though.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Terry. I think it's great that we're, you know, over a three year period of time, seen our tax village decreased by in a half mills, right?
Yep, absolutely. But the flip side of that, of course, is the the crazy real estate market has house values have gone up right dramatically.
So so am I am I okay to to assume that the the pieces that go into that are raising rising property value in the district of of current homes, right? When businesses come in and build new structures, it adds to the overall evaluation of this of the school district and then also as more homes are constructed, right? So those three things together play into that.
Yes, and and the rates I'm looking at right now, those are the residential agricultural, the commercial is a different rate. But I was going over the sense where the majority of us is our district is residential agricultural, roughly ninety three, ninety four percent. Those are the rates that's going to the commercial rates are just a little bit different.
Yeah. I I might add the last communications I had with the real estate people was in the area of property values, which was going up on the average home, a thousand dollars a month. That was pretty good.
Wow.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for putting that together, Terry, for us, especially over a over a three year period of time. So on the resolution, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Thank you. And one other thing I wanted to add real quick, I got notified here during the meeting that our elevator is correct and it is up to date. They just need to hang the new the new certificate.
That's good to know.
Yeah, so Martin, so yeah, it is it is up to date.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Not a problem. And that's all.
Hi, Martin.
Thank you, Terry. And also I appreciate the extraordinarily quick response time on that concern. Thank you.
Yeah.
I got people in high places sometimes.
All right. So the next thing on the agenda is item E, which would be superintendent's reports and recommendations. Mr. Power?
Thank you. I'd ask the board's approval. There are two, I have two different personnel items, but personnel item under number one, I'd ask the board's approval for items listed under number one.
I'll move.
I got Mrs. Grace first and then Mr. Seibert with a second. Any discussion?
You'll you'll see, this is a busy contract month. This is renewal and extension and extending of new contracts to our administrative and support and in teaching staff personnel. Also, you'll see some resignations and some retirements listed there. And we're asking the board to approve those.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd ask the board to approve item number two under personnel.
In a motion, please.
I'll move.
I I got Mrs. Grace and then a second by Mr. Hamlin. Any discussion?
This is just issuing of another contract.
Thank you, Greg. Roll call, please.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Stain?
Stain? Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd ask the board's approval of a new job description and pay scales for a payroll coordinator and an educational specialist.
Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Seibert and second by Mrs. Horvath. Any discussion?
This is, these are two revisions in positions that are a part of the facility or the fiscal year twenty two program plan that we've discussed with the board over the last couple of months. These job descriptions were up for review in months prior and we're asking the board to adopt the job description along with the associated pay scale at this time.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to ask the board for approval for all of the handbooks that are listed under item number four.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hamlin? Any discussion?
These are updated handbooks that are reflective of our building realignment for next school year.
Any questions?
They have to do the do the students or parent have to sign that they've read that?
Yeah, there is. There is a signature page in these that's available for the students or older students or the ones that typically do that or younger students. That doesn't typically happen in our elementary grades.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Thank you. Under number five, I'd ask the board's approval to rescind the policies as listed.
I have a motion, please.
I'll move.
Mr. Hamlin?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Horvath. Greg, you want to do a little background here, please?
Yeah, these are policies that were put in place related to COVID leave and family medical leaves are related to COVID. All of these all of the requirements and the effective dates of the policy, which were the result of federal legislation. The 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 federal government did not extend this leave, these leave frameworks related to COVID. So they're no longer enforced and we're asking the board to rescind these since they're obsolete at this point.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Gonda?
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. On our item six, so we asked the board to amend the June twenty twenty one meeting date from the scheduled June twenty second twenty twenty one date to June the twenty ninth twenty one twenty twenty one.
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
A second.
Second by Mr. Seibert? Do you want to share? I I know, I think I have an idea why we want to do it, but Terry, do you want to share why why we want to make a switch to the to the meeting day?
Absolutely. The June first this year is a Tuesday. So the fourth Tuesday comes a little bit earlier than normal. And it's the end of the fiscal year. The closer we can get to the end of the fiscal year, makes it a little easier for us to get to our final numbers, everything together for June and actually for starting off for July also. So I was just asking for the board's approval to move it to to the final Tuesday of the month.
Sounds good. That makes sense. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Under item seven, I would ask the board to, we'd like to reinstate the student Board of Education representative. This is typically a student who is from our high school. We weren't able to continue that practice this past year because of COVID, but we'd like to re-implement that practice starting in September. So to ask the board's approval to appoint high school student Sam Dooley as a new student Board of Representative, Board of Education representative for the twenty twenty one twenty two school year.
Motion, please.
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
A second.
Second by Mr. Seibert? Any discussion?
We have a process that's been in place for a few years where a student will go around and seek to have a petition signed and a certain number of signatures. And then they typically would submit a a letter of interest or resume and a little video introducing themselves to the board. And I've shared that with the board and we would really love to welcome Sam as a as our student rep starting in September.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. I'd like to welcome Sam to to our group and this is one of the really good things that I think we do. I don't know if other school districts do it, but I really I really like that we do it and that we've always had great student representatives to be on the board. So I look forward to welcoming soon.
Good idea. So does he come to it? How does it work? Does he?
He'll actually be sitting with the board as a part of the board meetings and he'll be there as a resource for the board to seek feedback on on things that are pertinent to our students.
Nice.
Yeah, they usually are. They add quite a bit. It's it's surprising.
Next, I would like to ask the board's approval of resolution twenty one dash zero zero two. It's a resolution to authorize the paper test administration of the state of Ohio third grade language arts and mathematics assessments.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mr. Hamlin?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Horvath. Greg, you want to give us a little background here, please?
Yeah, this is an annual resolution that we seek board approval on within the law, which was, I think, Senate Bill two sixteen. Instead of it, it the the test is typically a computer generated test, but when we look at third graders and their fine motor and their ability at that grade level, and this is such a the reading portion of this, especially is such a high stakes test for our third grade kids that we have continued to pass his resolution so that they can take that test in the form of paper pencil.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Gonda.
You were.
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Sorba?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last item I have is ask item nine, seeking the board's approval for the fiscal year twenty two program plan as presented.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace? Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Seibert? Mr. Power, you want to give us a quick update here? I think there may be just been a few changes to the one we saw last month.
Sure. Yeah, we we we're looking at the food service element. There might be some minor change there on the staffing. As you recall, we were making a couple of reductions there. There is still a reduction of one kitchen manager that is under that category and there's some I think there's a there's a revision of a five hour cook position to six hours as a part of the realignment. But the funding for the food service actually is a separate account. It's not it's not run out of our operating funds and it's been in the in the black for many, many years. So they actually are a part of our operation that operates in the black and doesn't require any of our regular operating funds to operate. I think the other change that that I'll note there to you in my previous presentations of this, we were looking at a developing full time remote option for next year. As we have gotten our group of teachers and administrators together to look at that and to go through looking at the programming there. You will note that there's an absence of of a program that we currently have in place right now. It's VLA that we're using to do that with our families. We've we've learned much about remote education during this last year and the lessons learned, these are lessons learned that will help us refine and upgrade the digital elements that are in our in seat learning program. However, we have found as we've looked at this, that there are many personal, social and emotional relationship elements that are just absent when we hit see a student that's in a full time virtual remote framework. And we can't replicate our quality learning that we have present in our in seat program in that remote framework right now. So therefore, we plan on resuming a full in seat program for next school year and not offering a remote option. And that that is a change since last month after our study group looked at this and had a review of this. So it asks the board's approval for the plan as presented.
Any questions or discussion?
So if someone has a a health reason, that would be some that's something that you could reconsider?
Well, typically if we have students with severe health issues, there would be there's there is a home instruction option that's there for older kids. We do have some individualized online options at the high school, especially occasionally with students from the junior high. But we're pretty much, we pretty much have been able to address other health concerns that are with our elementary kids without offering a full time remote option.
Okay.
Hey, Greg, am I am I right that even before COVID, there was a mechanism in place where if a student needed some kind of remote option, like better term, that there there was a mechanism already in place for at the building level, the district level?
If there were, if there were extreme situations, yeah, we had a we had a whole Miami online that was very selectively utilized based on some very serious health issues that students may have had.
And that that option will exist, move.
That that option, it's a pre-COVID option that will continue to exist.
Okay.
Or merely sort of junior high, mostly high school kids.
Right. All right. Any other questions or discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Next thing on the agenda, item F would be new business. The first thing on that agenda is a first reading of some updated board policies. So please make sure each of you looking those over. And then item two would be the Warren County Career Center Report. So Mrs. Grace?
Yes. Our early childhood education instructor Lisa Powell was recognized with a certificate of appreciation from the board for her dedication to building strong partnerships in the early childhood industry. Word member Lisa Bab said her staff at Foresee, a childcare resource and referral agency, is impressed with what an outstanding job she does to help students. Assistant Director of Secondary Education, Kim Gates, said she set a goal to increase partnerships with business and industry when she started in her position. She is now transitioning transitioning to the Director of Adult Education, has had and has plans to build more bridges between high school and adult programs. Our treasurer's office received the Ohio Auditor of State Award for two thousand twenty. We received that too, didn't we, Terry?
Yes.
The board approved renewals of agreements with Microsoft, Shredit and others. We accepted donations and we had OSBA legislative reports and student achievement reports. Superintendent Rick Smith invited the board members to the golf outing and reported on enrollment and the organizational chart. We have a new one. He also announced that the twenty twenty one Franklin B. Walter Award went to the cosmetology student Roberta Roberta Orval, who cited her instructor Levita Stanton as a mentor most responsible for her success. So we're doing well. I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Grace. Next thing would be board reports. So we'll do the student achievement report first. So Mrs. Horvath?
Yeah, so this is going to be about student achievements in Little Miami. So congratulations are in order to Emily Young, Sophiaia Pucko, Marina Lindsay and Lucy Schneider for being selected to represent Little Miami High School at Buckeye Girls State this year. Congratulations. And the Little Miami High School academic team are twenty 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 one ECC champions, finishing an undefeated with a record of eighteen zero. Coach Ron Malpin says that not only have the team's senior members been a blessing to the coach, but this year's group embodied the definition of team from the very start. So congratulations to them. And congratulations to senior Isaac Montoya for being selected as the little And congratulations to senior Isaac Montoya for being selected as the Little Miami recipient of the Franklin B. Walter Scholarship. It's sponsored by the Warren County Educational Services Center and it's for demonstrating outstanding academic achievement through grades and test scores and school activities. Congratulations to Isaac. And then we have nine WCCC students that tested for the first ever Virtual Skills USA Regional Competition and of the nine, five of them placed in the top three places in their respective contests. So Ashton Weddington, a junior at Little Miami, earned a gold medal in the information technology contest and he'll go on to compete at the state level. And then congratulations are in order for three Little Miami students to receive the nomination to attend Buckeye Boys State this summer. Caleb DeTilio, Ryan Hauser and William Zagarsky. Uh, it's an eight-day hands-on experience in the operation of the democratic form of government. And then lastly, Little Miami Junior High Heroes Squad fundraiser benefiting Leukemia and Lymphoma Society raised over eleven thousand dollars in just a two-week timeframe. So congratulations to, um, Little Miami Junior High Heroes Squad fundraiser. Good job overall.
That's a, those are great things, uh, to hear, uh, some of the great things that are, that our students do every single day. So, thank you, Diane.
Outstanding.
Absolutely. Um, Mr. Seaver, you have a legislative update for us tonight?
Yes, yes, I do. Um, it would involve fair school funding of public schools. Like industry, our schools operate on something called a twenty and eighty-twenty principle, where if we can concentrate on just twenty percent of our problems, it may produce an eighty percent return. With that said, Ohio public schools are annually eighty percent of those are underfunded. So with the pandemic, that area has become even worse. Uh, the most richest schools and the poorest schools compete equally on a, uh, standardized tests. And so we can all see where that's going. So what can be done about this? Uh, school funding was declared unconstitutional some years ago. Uh, there are many bills before our federal and state legislature. In fact, there are so many, it's impossible to talk about them. Uh, there's as many as four hundred and forty thousand nationally in the Ohio legislature. We can trace these on legislature dot ohio dot gov. There's a hundred and thirty-four bills statewide. Of those thirty-seven actually directly relate to our educational system. Only our Ohio legislatures can solve the problem of fair school funding. Our governor, our judicial system have no ability to do that. That duty rests squarely upon the shoulders of our legislature. House Bill number one has three hundred and forty pages and it addresses s- fair school funding. There's also a senate version of that. Senate version is three seventy-six. That bill also has two hundred and ninety-nine pages. The area of public school funding can produce an eighty percent return with eighty percent of the Ohio public schools going underfunded each year. So with that, I would enjoy or in, um, encourage everyone to contact your local representatives. They're putting together the final budget. They can bring these bills to fruition. So I would encourage you to contact your legislature. And with that, today and every day, it's always a great day to be a Panther. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Um, the next thing on the, uh, on the agenda is our next, uh, regular board meeting. Right now it's scheduled for April the twenty-seventh, Tuesday night at, uh, seven PM. And then, uh, the last thing, um, Emily, is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
None.
None? Okay, thank you. So, uh, before we adjourn, I just like have one thing I'd like to add. I want to say that, um, I've seen some of the communications lately about, um, the ability for us to have a, a graduation ceremony for, uh, two thousand twenty-one graduates. And then I also saw something went out today about, uh, the planning of, of a prom for our, uh, for our, uh, for our senior class. And I just want to say thank you to, um, the building level and district level administrations for all their hard work and, and making it happen. I know that, uh, um, the hard work's probably just getting started, but, um, the opportunity to bring back some of those, th- those two big uh, things for high school seniors to some kind of sense of normalcy is certainly appreciated and hopefully our kids and our families are able to enjoy them.
I agree a hundred percent. So important.
So with that, um, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll move.
So I've got Mr. Hamlin. A second? So moved. Oh, I, I hear, and I hear Mr. Seaver, so I have a second. All right, uh, roll call, Mr. Gonda?
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Ms. Horvath?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.